All righty. Great, we are here November 5th, eleven oh one AM for a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. We could all turn off our cell phones and we'll stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Okay, we will look over the agenda. Tim, I think you had asked with two and twelve to come off, so two is the certificate of participation. And twelve is discussion of the housing authority guidelines, I don't think would be applying to third and sixth. I think we might, we'll take it off for a decision, but when we get to twelve, if we get like an update on where that stands. And I think, you know, kind of a quick discussion, but not the full discussion or not with a view to a decision. So we'll keep twelve on, but modify it to just a B O C C discussion rather than decision.
Okay.
But number two on the C O P, picking them off, and then yeah, maybe, or again, maybe you just give us like, if you would like, give us a quick update. On where that stands, but we would take it for sure, take it off as a decision item. So with those two notes, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Again, I think with agenda two and twelve move to a brief discussion rather than decision items. Sarah, any other comments on the agenda? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye, so the agenda is approved with those two slight modifications between twelve. Community information items, none for me. Okay, okay, great. Then public comment for items not on the agenda, anyone wish to make public comments? Again, again, just as usual, say your name and.
My name is Jan Marzal, two hundred and ninety three, Twin Lakes. My question was, do you have later an agenda item that is half of that, I guess, is executive session with the county attorney? And then later on, did you talk about it, can I address it or do you have to wait?
If, if, if you have a brief comment, I think I'll allow you to make it just in the interest of your, your time.
I mean, I expect that will be a long meeting and after the break, and that could be until lunchtime or.
Yes, it will be, yeah.
Yes, thank you very much. So I live in Twin Lakes and I have been, well, part-time really, at least four, five years. County, and in fact, I couldn't get any details about the agenda. When County Road twenty six is a very important access to my neighbors up north, neighbors, at least thirty homes. And I'm actually a little surprised only by accident that I found out and I notified my neighbors and some of them are not there, some of them just can't change their schedule. And unfortunately, over many years now, one of the developers or the developer interview lines has taken it on himself to, at one point, actually close a portion of the public road after sending you a letter claiming that it isn't private drive. Putting rocks in the way, I didn't have pictures of that. And so this has been going on for at least three years that I know about. He has unfortunately threatened many of my neighbors' lawsuits. For some reason, he has now singled out my wife and I and filed an illegal complaint against us. We had to hire a lawyer, we have easily run up now, we know five thousand, it will probably be ten thousand dollars to defend ourselves. In his legal writing, he actually complains that we have participated in public hearings about the development, that we have contacted government agencies as if we have to tell them that their First Amendment rights, free speech, and the rights, of course, to petition the government. Among them, he tells us we are trespassing because we are on his rope. And I have gotten the confirmation from your staff that it is indeed a public road and there are signs. He continues to double down and, in fact, our lawyer offered to settle it. And he really wants to take it to a hearing, so there will be in the other building, a hearing about this. Our attorney thinks it's the most frivolous law that she has ever seen. And I hope we can convince the judge that it is frivolous, malicious, and in fact absurd. I'm just saying, whatever the matter is, it's a, it's a road that as far as I know has been a public road, the county has been taking care of it for many decades. In fact, has received, I think it's called the, the federal highway users tax to maintain it. Of course, it's a very important access, not just daily, but for emergency fire. And it needs to, once you get into town, there's only one. And it is basically access that could decide life and death. And so I don't know what your discussions will be. We have tried to, like I said, we have gotten a compliment in the public world. I'm not sure whether you're talking about a portion of it, or the entire, and what the legal rights and responsibilities of the county. But just because only one of us is here doesn't mean that it's just extremely important for everybody in there. And so I appreciate it and if I can, I will be coming back later or be on Zoom. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, public comment?
Yes.
Okay, come on up.
I would like to amplify what this gentleman has been talking about. We have an issue in the city limit here on the same kind of thing. This is more of a prescriptive easement thing. As you go down Poplar Street, on the left-hand side, there's a right after K W Woodworks, there's another business there that has rental properties and they've closed off access to the alley. And they're claiming that that's their property and essentially constructively prescriptive easement doesn't qualify. And the city has not really moved forward on enforcing this prescriptive easement. On top of that, there's a, so there's a fire issue, access for fire trucks and things like that, as well as for the people that own the property in that neighborhood. Not only that, right angles from right where that prescriptive easement would end on the west, there's another alley that runs north to south, and that's being blocked by people with cars and cones. So I would like to see government become a little more aggressive in supporting rights of way both in the county and the city. Thank you kindly.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, could you state your name?
Steve Prestash. Most everyone, and you know, I need to add something else. There are encroachments on the rights of way, and that's a little different issue. Because my property approaches on the right way, both north and south. But these prescriptive easements, as far as, you know, things that were traffics going, I don't think they should be blocked off because somebody wants to make a legal claim and then screw government around on this with their lawyers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, any public comment on Zoom? Not seeing any hands raised. So with that, we can head in to the first agenda item. Discussion and formal introduction of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, plans and efforts to relaunch their one hundred and eleven-year-old chamber, Nancy Bailey.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Nancy Bailey, I own Level Exchange here on Main Street. And I'm here today on my team representing the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, so Nancy Bailey, would like to introduce Chris Lee.
Hi, I'm Christie Lee. I lived in Lake County now for six years. I run a web development, software development company based out of Summit County. Chris Lee's been involved, how long is it, like, over a year really?
Two years, two years, yes. And.
Everybody, you know, I'm right with such outliers, board member of Lake County Chamber of Commerce. I'm excited to be part of this very much.
We know you guys have a lot on the agenda and we will, we're really here just to go on the record and introduce ourselves. This is three out of five board, core board that is involved in the re-imagination of our one hundred and eleven-year-old Chamber of Commerce. After a four, five-year organizational reset, that's kind of what we're calling it. We decided that a collective voice of the business community is just, it's a must. And the chamber is, is a great advocacy tool that the municipalities can use to make informed decisions. So a couple of things, our renewed vision is really taking us back to our roots. And what does that mean? That means that even before there was a chamber organization, Leadville Lake County organized a business advocacy group called the Leadville Commercial Club. And this predated nineteen twelve. And so what that means is, is that it's, it's in our DNA to organize and work together as a community to create jobs and a future that's great, that's great for us all. And not many communities in the country get to say that we have an one hundred and eleven-year-old organization. I think it's out of the several thousand chambers in the country, less than five percent are over a hundred years old. We could not just let this organization just die. So we do recognize that it was a noticeable gap, right, in, for you guys and for the rest of the community to kind of shift from a reactive approach to a more strategic approach about helping our business community and ensure that our community, our kids in high school, our kids at C M C actually have quality jobs and those pathways that lead to those quality jobs within our own communities, that we're not continuing to lose talent to our other neighboring, or even neighboring states. So I know that happens a lot. So we have made a couple of few accomplishments in the last six months. So Chris Lee and myself have been involved. Some of you may or may not know that Tracy Purdy, who was the president for many years, hired even COVID, I think she said nine years as the president, and the chamber has gone through an evolution just like our community, right? And this chamber has evolved into what we are here representing today. And that is more of a business advocacy and a partnership for you guys so that we can make good decisions together to ensure just a prosperous community. It's, it's, it takes all of the spokes working together in order to achieve this. So a couple of things we've accomplished, the president has stepped down. And I was the vice president of the board at the time, so the board voted me in as interim president. When I say that is that some of you don't know, it's, we're in an interesting position, right? We're honoring a one hundred and eleven-year-old organization also while starting over. So, so I'd like just to call out for some grace and know that we are open to all the feedback and ideas of how we can lead a better strategic partner for you guys as well as our business community. So we have a throne, our board, our core board is, makes up of five of us that represent a diverse, you know, representation of our business community. And we, we know that a formal board will be installed once we actually have members. So we inherited an organization that has no members. So after, and we'll get into that in a minute, but once we have membership to vote on their leadership, that is when we'll have an official formal election. And that is why I use the word interim in front of president, knowing that that is just a really part of the formal process of getting the organization where it needs to be. A couple of different things that we have accomplished here in the last couple of months is the visitor center tourism panel relationship with the L triple C A. And we have separated ourselves from that real estate, if you will, with Carl and the visitor center. So the tourism house, we all know, done an amazing job operating the visitor center. And that actually, that evolution of that has allowed the chamber to evolve into what we need, which is business advocacy and staying focused, staying focused on that. We have made a financial separation with the visitor center, thanks to Katie and Adam's team. They are a very valuable team member for all of us. And really without all of these organizations working together, and I mean, the E D C Main Street Tourism Panel, we really wouldn't be here. We're now positioned to, to represent that noticeable gap. And the last accomplishment is that after, I think, over six, I think, six years, we accomplished business after hours. So I'd like to give ourselves a round of applause. And I think that was a really important litmus test for us that the business community is, understands the need for local Chamber of Commerce and how important ours is. Ours is special. And I think if we can lean in to that heritage, I think it just makes all the sense in the world. Now, you asked today, we're not here soliciting funding today. We are here to, and I have a little parting gift for you, just to kind of give you an idea of what kind of partner we can be and what kind of information we can share with you so that when you are making budget decisions and other things in the coming years, that you're making those important investments in our business community. And there are certain strategic ways you can do that. And we're here to kind of help create those types of programming that is really business-informed, right? So I think that will, all of that working together will really help retain jobs in our community. And I think right now, that's, you know, that really needs to be top on our list. Before we can afford childcare and homes, we have to have access to the basic community of quality job in our community. So let's see, I think I said we were starting from the bottom, although we're at the top. We are, more than anything, we're just excited to be here. This has been a long time coming and we feel like we're positioned to, to be that strategic partner. So I really appreciate it. We really appreciate your time. One last note, we are in organizational mode, so we will not be having any additional business after hours as we are still creating programming and creating those types of things so that in twenty twenty-five, we can come out with a meaningful program. So I just appreciate all your time. I know you guys have a lot going on in the next few weeks, getting budgets together. But I want to leave you with this, I didn't send it to you in advance because it's really not, you know, it's not, this is just an example of some of the kind of things that we can implement going forward. And maybe not for twenty twenty-five, but definitely into the rest of the year, or twenty twenty-six and beyond. Just a job retention strategy that I was lucky enough to help create back at the E D C that I came from. It was part of a, a multi-promed playoff emergency strategy program that I helped pilot in L A. That was the model across the country, actually. And these, these strategies actually work. And there's ways to demonstrate the value of those things. So I just thought I'd pass that along, and if you have any questions, please reach out to us and we sure appreciate all you do.
Great, thanks. I really appreciate you coming in person and then giving that presentation and great. And I'll just say a couple of quick things. I mean, yeah, I even am outgoing elected official, this is an elected official. I mean, it is really important to hear from businesses and there are dozens and dozens and dozens of companies here, organizations, small businesses. And it's just, it's hard to hear from all of them or reach out to all of them, I mean, to the point of impossibility. So I, I totally agree in having a revitalized and functioning chamber is really important to hear those concerns, you know, on things that the county, city, other jurisdictions are, are working on. So I really look forward to that for my successor. And then I was gonna say, I really appreciate the who does what slide, you know, calling out the Chamber of Commerce, Tourism Panel, Visitor Center, Economic Development and Main Street Program, and this is really helpful so people understand who's in what lane and where the sort of collaboration is. So again, that nice job and thanks for trying.
Thank you. I also would love to add, I think that there are really critical conversations and planning initiatives that are coming up both in the housing authority and the city and county housing projects, as well as the, what did I say? The houses, the programs and planning and climate action plan. And there's a lot of things that are overlapping that are happening next year that I often wish we heard from more business owners and have more input. So I think that would be really important for you guys to keep track of, please.
Yes.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Happy end of the year.
Yeah. Okay, for agenda item number two, maybe, Tim, I just like a super quick, I know you've been like pushing hard on this and totally understand that things just weren't ready for decision today, but could you give us like a quick level update on timing and where we stand and where we might see a decision?
Sure, so we, Chris, we're in a meeting with Steve Public Finance later this week to review everything. Chris did not slot through all three hundred pages while we were on vacation last week. We made, we made that, but there are just a lot of things that we need to understand, especially for budget impacts. Bonded insurance, all of those things that we need to understand. So there is the possibility we could do a special meeting next week for a decision on that.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll get there as soon as possible as we get through all of the information and get answers from Alan and Kuta.
Okay, so things are generally, it's just a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay, I think that's good, yeah. Agenda item number three, discussion and consideration of the approval to fill a vacant seat on the library board of trustees.
Yeah, hey, yeah, hi, you guys, can you hear me?
Fairly, yeah, you're a little faint.
Okay, I mean, one.
On our end.
Okay. Sorry, I'm having like computer, I'm having computer issues. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, yeah, so we're filling the vacancy for that Christie Galarza left after she left in August. And the board has voted for Jennifer Miller. She's a fifth grade teacher at L C I S and she's been pretty involved in the library all summer volunteering, helping with programs. So she's been a great addition around the library. So that's it. Does anybody have any questions about her?
No.
No, no questions from any of the three of us. So that's okay.
To make the appointment of Jennifer Miller to the library board of trustees.
Second, great, and call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Jennifer Miller is appointed. Thank you, Brenna.
Okay, thanks you guys.
Agenda item number four, public hearing to consider the renewal of Cooper Hill Ski Area Inc. Doing business as Ski Coopers Hotel and Restaurant, sorry, Restaurant Optional. Okay, license number zero five zero one five seven six dash zero 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 zero.
This is online?
Okay.
Hello, so Ski Cooper's license is going to expire on November sixteen. They have done all of the steps with the renewal paperwork with the county as well as with the state. They paid both their local and state fees for this renewal, and my recommendation would be to approve it. And also, no public comment was received.
I think just, I think I'm doing this right, but I need to open up just for final public comment here on again, the renewal of liquor license for Cooper Hills Ski Area. Not seeing any hands in the room or online for final public comments. Let me just wait a second. So with that, I'll close the public comment on liquor license, public hearing today. And see if there's any questions or comments from public commissioners. I don't have any, so I can go ahead and just look for a motion to approve. And again, it's the renewal of the Cooper Hills Ski Area Inc. Liquor License and its number zero five zero one five seven six dash zero 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 zero.
I'm looking to approve.
Second.
Okay, great. Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that liquor license renewal for Cooper's Hill Ski Area is approved. Liz, thank you for managing that and thank you, Ski Cooper, for getting everything in order. Okay. Agenda item number five, public hearing to consider the renewal of C N T LLC, doing business as Leadville Liquors. License number zero three dash one five zero six eight. Again, Liz, you have the floor.
They're same, Leadville Liquors, their expiration on their liquor license is going to expire on December fifteenth. They've completed their steps locally as well as with the state. And I have received no public comment, so I would also recommend approving this liquor license renewal.
That is great. As before, open up a public hearing and look for any public comment in the room or online for the Leadville Liquors license renewal. Seeing none, we can close that public comment and the public hearing portion. And I'll look for a motion to approve the Leadville Liquors license renewal, number zero three dash one five zero six eight.
Sorry, second.
Okay, I see a first and a second.
Nothing.
Nothing, so call, look for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, so that renewal for Leadville Liquors, zero three dash one five zero six eight is approved. Again, thanks, Liz. Thanks, Leadville Liquors, for being in good order. Agenda item number six, discussion and consideration of a professional services agreement with Geo Land Solutions, Inc. Doing business as a value base for support in the appraisal process.
I can.
Okay, great.
For the assessor's office. So what this is, this is a software licensing services contract that the assessor has requested. So really what it does is it pulls the data from Tyler. Provides ability to clean the data, but then also can do the updates for our residential land valuations much quicker and cleaner than what the, what our current software is able to do and taking all that staff time and ability to do it. This is a model that various counties across the state and the nation use. And they supplement Tyler or other software platforms with it. You know, if you think of Lake County and all of our various parcels and how things are, if you think of E E Hill, it depends on where you're at on E E Hill and how your land is valued on your view shed and how nice it is and how high it is, all of those kind of things. This, this software can, can take that data and instead of the assessor and his staff having to go through everything by hand, you know, going and going out and doing appraisal site visits and all of that, it greatly reduces that amount of staff time to have to do that. So it is an efficiency driver. It is something that the assessor has tested quite a lot with this firm in that and pulling the data and then also reaching out to other assessors across the state on how it works. He's been very impressed with it and then has requested this, you know, for, for ongoing. So it'd be fifteen thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four. However, that, that can go into twenty twenty-five, which of course will be the, the ongoing annual maintenance. But the fifteen thousand would get everything set up, have the valuation models, the data visualization, all of that starting and be done, you know, before the end of this year.
And did you say, so I understand that the, there's like better formulas in this program than it is in Tyler. You cannot apply a formula to an attribute in Tyler, you have to manually put it for every account, as you have said.
Yeah.
But the, do, is there a guarantee that that information and value base will easily shift over? Are we still going to manually input those? It's just gonna, I understand it'll still be a reduction of staff time.
It'll, so everything that it does is it cleans and pulls the data, it will be able to actually like flag things like, hey, you should look at this. Instead of the assessor opening, you know, all of our residential. Instead of um the assessor opening, you know, all of our residential properties and the categories of the county and like. Trying to make sure that things are right. Um, so the search functions and capabilities aren't in Tyler. Uh, so this this actually allows you to to flag those things and then allow for that for that review. Um, so you have that, um, and then you can import it back in Tyler.
But you can import it back into Tyler.
Yes.
Pretty easily.
Yes.
Okay, I thought that was maybe something that was not certain, but sounds like.
Yeah, they can pull it out and then they can they um can put it back in for the format that Tyler uses and then and then it's there. And then they also help with that piece and then the staff training for that.
Great. Questions for me? I'll move to approve the PSA with Geo Land Solutions Inc. Doing Business as Value Base.
Second your motion. Right, I actually just had one question. Is this then gonna be like an annual fee for this functionality with the?
Yes, okay, yes. Yeah, and this also, this will um. Give the county a little more time to evaluate Tyler, how it works um across across the organization. After trainings with the finance team, because now it's working, it's functional, it's it's great, finance team can use that. You know, there's some uh wants and needs for the human resources information system part of Tyler. Um, that we can use, uh, you know, that we can evaluate on that. Maybe going forward with this would at least allow us to keep uh Tyler for, you know, the internal functions for HR and finance. And then the uh elective functions for the assessor and the treasurer, because the treasurer doesn't have uh issues with Tyler. But um it has proven a pain point for the assessor's office, so this is a. It is an efficiency driver, but it's also a a stopgap having to go out to bid and completely overhaul all the counties' um systems.
Yeah. Okay, um. That's good, thanks. Uh, we have a motion and seconded on the table, so call for a vote?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, great. Uh, so that PSA with Geo Land Solutions uh doing Business as Value Base is approved. Great. Um, agenda item number seven, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Carrion Consulting LLC. To serve as a language access and compliance architect to expand the language access initiatives grant for human services. Uh, Kristen Logan is listed.
Hello.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Yeah, so this is another contract um sending your way again. Um, this is for another Hickpuff Grant that we were awarded for customer service. Um, again, part of our language access initiatives. Um, so we had really great responses. For um this um RFP that we sent out. Um, for the contractor to guide this next iteration of the grant. Um, we had five total responses, a great assortment. Um, of ideas, but we decided to go again with Maria Carrion Ayers with Carrion Consulting. Um, who has guided this work for the last three years. Um, so this year's project is all about opening up our suite of services to other county departments. Um, making sure we have a solid foundation for our interpreter network. Um, and also offering policy guidance to a few other Colorado counties DHS departments. Um, so we've been really impressed with Maria's work and um we hope you'll consider approving this PSA. So we can get to work with her again.
Um, just I wonder if Kristen might name those others that submitted the proposals for us? Do you have that list, Kristen?
Um, yes, I do. I do not have that ready, but I can pull that up.
And I don't have any other questions on Maria's work.
Sure, so we had um Andrea Salazar with We Amplify It LLC. Gabriela Flores with Flores Advisors. Uh, Lauren Barrett with M Pathway Education. And Manar Swabi with Swaby Access. And then, of course, Maria Carrion Ayers with Carrion Consulting. Thank you.
Um, I don't have any questions. Uh, call for uh a motion to approve uh the PSA with Carrion Consulting LLC. Actually, sorry, I should have just asked it with bit on legal review.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um, sorry. Yeah, yeah. Uh, call for a motion um to approve the PSA with Carrion Consulting LLC. So moved.
Second.
Uh, call for a vote?
Hi.
Hi.
Ah, great. Uh, so that PSA with Carrion Consulting is approved. Uh, thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
Um, agenda item number eight, discussion and consideration of an amendment to the PSA with Teak Symington to increase um the not to exceed. Uh, um. About the amount of twenty one thousand uh for additional support to the clerk and recorder's office. Tim, you're listed on.
Sure, um, so this was a request by the clerk and recorder's office to increase the not to exceed amount. Uh, for Teak Symington, who is a an elections expert and who has been helping. Train Lake County Clerk and Recorder Staff and Lake County Clerk and Recorder on elections. Uh, best practices and supporting uh the clerk's office um during this uh very important and consequential election. Um, so the uh, uh, there is an additional need for Teak's time. Um, and having her uh onsite supporting the clerk and reporter's office team.
Um, any questions?
No questions.
I'll move to per the fourth amendment to the government for services with Teak Symington.
Second. Uh, go ahead and call for a vote?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, uh, so uh that uh additional amendment, uh, fourth amendment to the PSA uh is approved. They are working hard as we speak. Um, agenda item number nine, discussion and consideration of an amendment to the PSA with I Bailey. To expand the project to include developing the Lake County Government Chart of Accounts. Laura.
Yes, hi. Uh, so the project's basically contracted by I Bailey to help us. Have been through a lot of our financial processes through work with them. We have um. Kind of come to the conclusion that we need to clean up our target accounts, which is basically our GL or general letter of accounts. Uh, some of which are outdated, unused, so getting rid of those. And then um I think where you have seen this most often is the rollups, right? A lot of our revenue is coming in as miscellaneous and then should go into other um like intergovernmental grants, et cetera. And so it will help with transparency with the public and also just um. Uh, overall efficiency between us and the treasurer. So um we have four thousand dollars left of that. That um contract for twenty twenty four. Uh, and hoping to be able to add a little bit to that for twenty twenty five uh to complete that work. There, they told us it would be roughly around ten to twelve thousand. We added a little bit extra just in case. Once they got there, but it's uh more worth it than they expected, so. It's not to exceed a ten thousand in addition to the four we precal.
Okay. I don't know.
Okay, um, great. Uh, then look for a motion to approve uh that amendment to the existing PSA with I Bailey. Uh, to expand the project to include developing the Lake County Government Chart of Accounts. So, second, okay, uh, call for a vote?
Hi.
Hi. Uh, so that uh amendment to the PSA with I Bailey is approved. Uh, thank you, Lauren. Uh, number ten, uh, discussion and consideration of Lake County Government applying for proposition one, two, three. To support the housing at uh ten thousand two hundred feet project. Uh, Michael is listed.
So Michael is on his way, he's stuck in traffic. The next four. Yeah, because he's gonna be.
Is he on assembly?
Will is on his way over right now, so he would be the next one. Okay. Okay.
Okay, so uh, uh, fourteen, is that where we're gonna jump to?
Uh, yes.
Uh, great, um, so, yeah, um, and Jackie, yeah, thanks, that I think that's totally fine. Um, and we'll have the the break in there somewhere. Uh, discussion and consideration of a PSA with DMC Auditing and Consulting LLC. For professional auditing services for the fiscal year ending December thirty one, twenty twenty four.
I think it should be twenty twenty five.
Uh, okay.
On there. This.
Yes.
Uh, discussed at the last uh regular uh board meeting. Um, we had put out to bid for uh long term um professional auditing services. Um, oh, thanks, never mind. All right, um, so it is, right, so they will be doing the auditing services for fiscal.
Oh, for this, yeah, yeah.
Uh.
It won't be.
Fiscal year, yes.
Done by that date, but it is for that calendar year. Gotcha.
Yep, sorry about that.
Yep.
Uh, but this is uh just the uh PSA that we have with DMC Auditing and Consulting.
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty straightforward, um.
No, I don't have any question.
Uh, I look for a motion to approve the PSA with DMC Auditing and Consulting LLC. So move.
Second.
Okay. Uh, call for a vote?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, uh, great, that is approved. Um. Are we good to just keep going in in order from fourteen onwards?
I think so. We have listed here in CC's online.
Great. Um, agenda item fifteen, discussion and consideration of an official housing record to approve a conditional land use permit. For a basement accessory dwelling unit in Pennark Subdivision to be used as a long term rental.
Wow. Something we're being right on.
You can catch a breath.
You guys are, you guys are putting more.
Well, we, well, we. Agenda items, so.
Did you? Okay, good. Well, thank you. Um, as you can tell, I'm not Anne. She's listed on the agenda, but. I am the one that processed this application for a conditional use permit. For David Hauser, who um is adding an ADU to his home in the Pennark subdivision. And so the the application was heard on October twenty eighth by the Planning Commission. I think all three of you were present. And so there was nobody there that spoke, um, nobody from the public who spoke on the application. Um, and I still can't remember. And uh, but the applicant was. The planning commissioner made a favorable recommendation to you based upon two conditions of approval. And so I'm gonna read the statement of motion amended one into the record after I grab the glasses. File number twenty four dash thirty five. At its October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four joint public hearing, the Lake County Planning Commission unanimously approved a motion. To recommend conditional approval with four members in favor. The original motion was made by Jason. Um, Marufo and seconded by David Clark Farrell. I move that the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Of file number twenty four dash thirty five. A conditional use permit application for an accessory dwelling unit on a parcel of land of less than one acre. Pursuant to the standards of section five point three point one B at two O two Pennark Drive, Tunlakes, Colorado. Further finding that the approval criteria pursuant to Lake County Land Development Code, section three point six point one act. Have been met as evidenced in the staff report dated October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. For file number twenty four dash thirty five. The conditions of approval are. Number one, the applicant shall work with community planning development to obtain a building permit. And subsequent certificate of completion for fully permitted accessory dwelling units. Part of. Yeah, this process will include but not be related to. Approval by the Lake County Fire Department, MEW A. And the Environmental Health Specialist. Number two, the statements made by the applicant in the application and hearing shall be considered conditions of approval. In that. Includes what I have to say.
I don't have any questions. It's gonna be straightforward.
I did, I did have a question. I thought, isn't this already constructed? It's under construction. Oh, okay, okay. Yeah. So it's, okay. They don't have a certificate of occupancy yet. Got it, okay. Um, alrighty, and then the approvals that you went into sweep from the fire department. Yeah, we have a positive um letter from them um that um. Has a couple of items that will need to be like making sure that the the um address is properly. Um, installed on the property. So, um, there there were no outstanding concerns from any of our agencies. Okay, okay, great. Thanks, Melissa. I don't have anything else. Um, to approve, um. New conditional use permits application for file number twenty four dash thirty five.
Second emotion.
Great.
And last question to the house, then I call for a vote?
Hi.
Hi, great. Uh, so as right into the record, um, that file, the conditional use permit for file twenty four dash thirty five is approved. Uh, thank you. Um. Number sixteen, discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty four. Uh, a resolution extending the temporary moratorium, uh, a reasonable duration on the submission of reference processing approval. Of any new signed permit application.
Now, Ange, the, I think she just got online, yeah.
Can you, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah, you're good, loud and clear.
Okay, great. Um, thank you so much. I'm remote today. Um, so as you will um probably all recall during our work session with the Planning Commission. Um, we determined that um some more time is needed in order to bring forward a new sign code. That really uh meets the goals and um desires of both the Plan Commission and and the input that we received both from the Plan Commission. And from the Board of County Commissioners. And so what we're asking for um is to extend the moratorium. Um, for an additional four months, which would put us um into March nineteenth. Um, we do believe that um based on the work session that we have clear direction on um. Where we should go with the with the sign code and it was really a great opportunity to um kind of make sure that we were. Um, aligned with uh what the Planning Commission and the board was thinking as final outcome um for the code revision. Um, however, we do need some additional time to make sure that we meet the goals of um the board in bringing forward the. The code amendment. So we are asking for an additional four months. Um, we only have um two signs that have um are looking to potentially rebrand or re-sign their. Um, businesses this year. Um, and so neither of them would be able, these are gonna be built built signs. And um so finishing the moratorium um by March nineteenth, um, we would be able to not further delay. Um, what we we anticipate is the the sign demand right now. And instead, we would be able to bring forward a more meaningful and intentional code. Um, so we're not. Um, this additional time is not really creating any kind of detrimental situation for any existing business or new business that is looking for signage. So I think um the additional time will be very beneficial and and I don't think any roadblocks in in um. Uh, or or potential um negative impact for any new businesses.
Yeah, Anne, is it, in the meantime, is it just anything goes or or what?
Oh, no, no, no. So in the meantime, we won't issue any type of permanent signage. So during the um moratorium, we won't, we will not issue any permanent signs. We will, however, consider um temporary signage, um, which would, again, you know, only be issued for. Um, a couple of months while we are finishing things up if um, you know, the need arose. But um we would not allow any um permanent signs during the moratorium until it's finished.
So there was, there was a discussion in that meeting about these. Those those banner type signs and the, and you know, those inflatable floppy things that people stick out there. And I've noticed that the new Domino's pizza has both of those. Those flags as well as one of those air driven floppy things that we were talking about, how tacky that looks and. Um. The, are we gonna allow? Uh the, are we gonna allow them to continue to do that or not?
So our code um is, we would consider those temporary signs, I was unaware. Um that Domino's had put up any type of those kind of banner or inflatable. Um devices, uh so we'll reach out to them and and determine the longevity of those. Um the final outcome of the code will um address those, but temporary, we 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 see those. Hopefully being temporary means of just a kind of a grand opening kind of thing, and maybe a new. Location awareness, but we would address those, um I mean, we can do that right now, find out what the intention is. Determine if it's temporary um and um and and kind of address it um in that matter. But I do anticipate that these are not, because we would not allow them. Um during the moratorium period as any, on any basis of a permanency um type of advertising device. So if that is their intention, they would have to come down if they're um on a temporary basis, we can have further discussion with them.
Okay, thank you.
Anne, sorry, the two businesses that you said were looking for signage, I didn't quite catch or understand. What the status was of that and how they would not be impacted.
Certainly, um so I I'm not sure if Cece's present, because she's gonna have to tell me what the other one is, I. Because I'm trying to recall what it is, but the one um that I know immediately is Lake Fork Mobile Home Park. So they do have um, you know, signage currently, they're just looking to update their signage. So they're not in a situation of of an immediate need and nothing that really. Um they'd be able to address until later in the year because it is a built sign. And Melissa or Cece, I don't know if you are in the room, but um can you help me recall what the other uh business is that that? Is kind of in temporary hold?
Sure, it's Mountain Gate subdivision.
Oh, Mountain Gate subdivision, um so we, they do have their road signs, um and they're, so the traffic. Um control signs for stopping, their stop sign, their Virginia Avenue signage, and then um some additional. Um signage about with their bike path area, so those aren't limited at all, but uh Mountain Gate would. Um again, be a built subdivision sign, which wouldn't be able to pull a building permit until after March and the end of the moratorium anyway. Um so they were concentrated on just getting in their um public infrastructure, their road. Um and drainage um uh improvements, and so they had just finalized those in October. So realistically, um they wouldn't be able to do a subdivision sign till spring either.
Thank you. Um move to approve resolution twenty four dash thirty four, a resolution extending the temporary moratorium of reasonable duration. On the submission acceptance processing approval of any new sign permit application.
Second motion. Okay, any further questions or comments?
Fine, why? Thanks, thank you, Anne.
Uh yes, uh call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh so resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty four, um extending. The signage moratorium for um uh up to four months is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um number seventeen, discussion in consideration uh of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty five. Uh Lake County Transit Policies.
Sure, so as we discussed at our last meeting, um these are, these policies. Are meant to go into effect as we continue to explore funding options for future. Uh funding for our local transit, uh the FTA does require these policies. Um we do have all of these requirements in the current contract with Downtowner LLC. So we are covered on that front, but should we want to move forward with future FTA funding? We need um a resolution and and these policies in place, um so these policies. There, if you remember, kind of five separate subpolicies. Lake County Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety, uh policies and procedures for transit services. Uh two, Lake County Equal Employment Opportunity Statement for Transit Services. Three, Lake County Title Six Plan for Transit Services. Four, Lake County Statement on Disadvantaged Business Enterprises for Transit Services. And five, Lake County Drug and Alcohol Policy for Transit Services and Operations. So this is really just teeing us up as we uh continue to explore future funding opportunities to keep local transit uh funded.
I'd one question, do you know, or is this something we're gonna have to keep track of sort of? Through the years, like do these get updated by the federal agency and?
Yeah, yeah, so when the uh when the FTA uh updates them, CDA, uh and then the. Uh Ca- Casta Color Association of uh Transit Authorities uh do pushouts and updates for all of these. So if there are substantial updates to any of these, then yes.
Your body, yeah.
Then we'll need to update them, but um. I can't imagine, I don't think. Um. Can imagine the the bigger, the bigger ones, uh the ADA policies and Title Six Plan, um having, having substantial updates. But I could see uh updates for the statement of disadvantaged business enterprises and the drug and alcohol policy. Uh but as those come, we'll, we'll make the the updates and adjustments.
Perfect. Just a small format, can we just like switch the motion on top of the title to keep it in format with our other ones?
The resolution number first?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we do that typically.
Yeah.
Thanks. Uh I don't have any other questions for you all, um but I do anticipate that. Well, maybe just an update on how, do we have any ridership info?
Yes.
And status info, that'd be great.
Yes, um so we have no complaints so far, so it's huge win. Um ridership has been going up, we pushed that a lot through our informal channels, through. Um library, pros and vol, um you know, our regular uh channels for communication, so ridership um is up. I do anticipate it to pick up more um in the evenings now with more like the winter sports coming in um. And having those uh pick up for the outline communities. And now that uh CMC is in full swing, there's a lot of ridership coming um down, so bringing, bringing that community, you know, further into our community. Uh but yeah, we have, we do have um decent ridership, um definitely areas to continue to improve. Uh we do have good um Spanish speaking ridership and request for rides. Um and we've uh met the needs and made some very happy people who normally are uh mobility impaired. Uh be able to get out and go to town or do their errands on their own. Um so it has had a a good impact, um if you haven't seen it, Cosmo takes it quite frequently, so.
Nice.
We have reached hard to reach um communities.
Are you gonna be able to put, to provide us with specific numbers?
Yes.
Okay, and then is there any movement on the possibility of a uh weekend shuttle between Ski Cooper and 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 town?
Uh yes, they're no longer on, um. We need to really, I think, just like bring that to Ski Cooper. Uh they understand, I know they have the dollar price, but they need to understand that they need to pay for if they want, they shuttle up to Ski Cooper, they need to pay for that. Um would be my recommendation. Um but yes, we have the, we have the cost of what it would be for eighteen winter weekends, which is the fifty five thousand dollars. Uh for ridership out there from city hall to uh Ski Cooper, um and really it's uh. You know, we can send that a formal notice to Ski Cooper, but I do think there's some other.
Yeah, I I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, I don't think city hall is an optimal. Gathering place, is is there some places that would have like more parking and and?
Um we have, um we have talked about that, um because I know that, but I I think the tables is blocked, right? They're they're not with somebody, okay, um this actually, city hall used to be the stop for the Ski Cooper bus back in the day, for. People who remember it, not many, I've just heard anecdotally, um. It's okay, I I think somewhere in the town court, yes, would be the appropriate spot for it.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I mean, uh I think we reach out to school district and. I mean, there's parking at some of the school facilities, right, and?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if 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 ten people are riding that bus, and I don't think there's, you know, not a lot of room here.
Right.
That's what I mean. I also, I was able to talk to Forest Service and I, Cooper needs to include that in their annual operating winter plan, which. Need to notify them of, uh they have not yet submitted that to the Forest Service. Um as far as I, the conversation that I had at the end of last meeting. Um. And I would be willing to have that conversation with Cooper on, you know, who, who, how do we pilot this for the community together? Um and work towards uh hopefully. Perhaps the revenues of Ski Cooper covering that, but I'd be willing to have that conversation to discuss what that really looks like.
Time, yeah, the yeses, yeah. So you know, that's that annual operating plan has to be agreed before they open, right?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I did not relay that to you on that day.
Uh no, sweetie.
I'm finished.
Okay. Um we okay, take any question or comment from?
Just, yeah, where's that, all torned, Lang Street, Twin Lakes, I assume you're talking about mobility, um. Mobility access. But I've used the Lake County commuter many times. And I was surprised one early morning, um or several early mornings. Um you have people that live in Leadville, they make five dollars more an hour at the. The Safeway in in Frisco than here in town. And so they actually ride that commuter one hour in the morning, one hour in the evening. You know, to make the extra five dollars, so. Whatever commuting you might imagine, imagine, it it goes certainly in both ways, and so I think you're not talking about the the Lake County commuter. But it is a, it's a great service, and you have a lot of, a lot of different folks, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Um.
Uh I can make a motion, okay, um I'll move to pass resolution twenty four dash thirty five, a resolution to adopt the transit policies.
Second motion.
And just flip flop on those.
Yeah.
Title.
Yeah, since we're still doing it right now.
Thank you, Summer.
Uh great, then uh call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh so resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty five uh on transit policies is approved. Great, and good discussion on the side there, um. Number eighteen, discussion consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty six, a resolution to adopt the Lake County. Leadership policy and practices, um.
Is this, okay. Is this related to the the stuff Sarah that she sent to, sent out to us, care of the lesson? The, where, for the Clear Creek stuff?
Yes.
All right, do we, do we wanna? Take a break on this and and maybe kind of. Retool this. I mean, we, we just.
I mean, that's certainly my view, and 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 I think, you know, as I reflected on our work, our our last discussion, I can work with a work session. Or regular meeting, um I mean, I I just think that the coming on ten pages version is too long. And I think we have some models from uh other counties and some other boards in. Lake County, you know, of shorter sort of leadership principles or policies or practices, whatever you wanna call them, so. Um I think we can. I mean, we can have a brief discussion now, but I think we can. We, the three commissioners can provide some more guidance to staff, or just take the pen ourselves, whichever is most efficient. Um and just sort of shorten those down into more like a principles rather than like the um. Regulatory document.
I think we just like to make it a little more succinct and, and to the point. Um and maybe not so all encompassing.
Yeah, that's certainly my direction, I don't know, I mean, happy to take more comments and discussion, but I think, I think we have some models that we're looking at and. Yeah, we can, we can circle back uh by email or in person discussion with staff and. Share this. Okay, so.
Do we wanna do a? Separate work session at all, or just? Shared drafts?
I mean, I'm open to whatever is.
I'm okay with a separate work session.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if we can fit it into one of our upcoming, well, you give me added to the agenda of an upcoming.
Uh not sure, I mean, I'd be willing to. Pencil forty five minutes or an hour and something like that.
Yeah.
To. Get it. Teed up for our next regular meeting.
So I think that, leave it for Sunday, like, you know, try to either find that standalone time, or if there is time. On a. Yeah, yeah, um because then, yeah, then. If we can fit it in before the next regular, then we would have a chance to to pass or revise. Or, you know, finally draft. Makes sense. So I think, yeah, we'll hold that to a work session schedule TBD.
Okay. And tee it up for the following regular?
Yep, I think that'd be ideal. I know we, I mean, I know we have a lot going on with budget and even get things. Moving with, you know, the CO two, you know, the big, big items, but yeah, I think that'd be great to. To try to move that fast with the next regular session. Um, okay. Uh nineteen, discussion consideration of repaying the city of Bloodville's escrow payment in the amount of one hundred thousand. Community Justice Center project at the Monroe site.
Sure, so when we embarked on the Community Justice Center uh project, we partnered with the city of Bloodville. Um uh working on covering some of the costs of the building and then having the um Bloodville Police Department in that building. You're all aware, the um price tag for that came back at sixty eight point five billion dollars. So now that the county is no longer moving uh forward with the Community Justice Center project um at the Monroe site. Um part of the agreement we had with the city, they did do a hundred thousand dollar escrow or down payment for that. So this is, I just uh, the amount of money, just need the board's approval for that, and we'll send it back to the city.
Yeah, for sure, I'll just say, I mean, I really appreciate, uh I mean, yes, all of a sudden I was way back in the midst of time, but really appreciate. Uh the city and city council, you know, working through that term sheet um. And 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 the IGA and and being a partner with that project, even though it didn't come to fruition, you know, appreciate them. Uh willing to be a part of that. Um and yeah, I think, from, at least from my perspective and recollection of the term sheet, that. That is entirely uh appropriate to return that to them.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, agree.
Um I'm going to approve uh the repayment to the city of Bloodville for the escrow payment in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Uh that was meant for the development and construction of the Community Justice Center project on, at the Monroe site.
Second your motion. Here, uh call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, so uh that approval is given, so yeah, to uh uh return that escrow payment of one hundred thousand. To the city. Um. Should we just keep, we get to keep moving along? Where we, somewhere in there, we have a fifteen minute break. Um. Oh, yeah.
Wow, it was about half day, but since we're all stuck, I'm doing that.
Jackie, how are we doing on Michael's timing? We don't know. So. Yeah. Let's, I mean, let's uh do the motion to go into executive session, and then we can take just a little break while. Um we play the rhythm as needed for that executive, uh that executive session. Um just maybe a point, should, should we do the motions for both executive sessions, just one at a time?
I do want it, especially given the, the timing right now.
Gotcha, okay. Um.
We have to wait for Michael. Second, okay.
Also, Michael's parking, so.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see that.
Okay.
Michael early.
So. So agenda, I'm, I'm sure, yeah, it's twenty, sorry. Uh perfect, yeah, let's go ahead and.
So I'm going to go into executive session to hold a conference with county attorneys pursuant to CRS twenty four dash six dash four two four. B, to receive legal advice on specific legal questions and any matters pertaining to continued public access to camera twenty six.
Second your motion. Good, and then it's the question to you, do we want to invite in for that discussion?
County manager, county attorney, county public works director.
Yes, and I think besides the three of you, I think that. Yes, and I think besides the three of you, I think that's probably it.
Okay.
For that topic.
Okay, we don't need, uh, we don't need CPD then.
Um, I don't think we're included as part of Melissa here, okay, so yes, let's have Melissa here, she will state, probably good to have.
Yeah. Okay.
Are we gonna toss them into a ring room, or are we gonna do a separate, you're gonna create a separate Zoom for Michael?
Since he's not here.
Yeah, so for folks on the Zoom, we are going into executive session, so we will close. This Zoom and we will reopen it, estimate twenty minutes. Right, so we're we're estimating twenty minutes, but we will do our, you know. We'll, we'll, we'll see where the discussion goes, but that's our guess, and when we'll reopen the public Zoom. I don't think.
I don't think you do.
I'll call for a vote on the executives.
Uh, thank you.
Is it okay if I just leave that on pause, it's not on or anything? About twenty minutes?
I think so.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's do twenty two and then.
Twenty twos, so that's the actual Biden's, you know, probably the best stat. Yeah, I think. We, um, we might just quickly do twenty twos. Which is the guidance, it's the guidance on from the executive session. It it'll be very quick. Yeah, yeah, I think I we're, we're gonna. Just hoping these year will make them better than to come out of executive session.
Like a motion to come out of the executive session.
The motion was made, come out of the executive session.
Let's just do that and ask. Okay, I'll second that.
Yeah, I'd like to make a, make a motion to come out of the executive session.
Right. Second.
Correct. And just, uh, and sorry, can you, Chris, will you state as as the attorney for the record, okay, so then that would just vote. Uh, poll for vote.
Yeah, for the record, I started out that the discussions during the executive session were subject to a term client privilege therefore no recording.
And and then I think quickly we'll, we'll go to agenda number twenty two to give staff guidance on. That kind of a twenty six matter, and then we'll go back. To items ten through thirteen, respectively. So.
I'm going to direct legal to create a an appropriate response to Mr. Elias's request. During calendar twenty six.
Um, I'll, I'll second that. Call for vote.
Right.
All right. Okay. Uh, maybe just quickly. Chris, that sufficient guidance?
Yes.
Great.
Well, does Mr. Elias's request for late realignment of Cambridge on six?
Okay. So then, sorry, just went off of my notes. So we will.
So I'm sorry, this is the second.
I second it.
Okay, sorry.
We'll go back to agenda item number ten. And we'll tackle ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen in order. So ten is discussion consideration of Lake County government applying for proposition one, two, three to support housing and then two hundred project. And I'll just say, I mean, I think, you know, we've broken these out, but if we need to sort of this, you know. We think we can tackle any and all of those topics in ten through thirteen, as you see. That actually, well, maybe thirteen will hold off.
Yeah.
But, you know, ten, eleven, twelve, we can tackle sort of in this coherent way, if that makes sense.
Can do it. So I will start with problem two three, so we met with the state, and I think I presented at the last meeting. The gap, the lack of a gap further a max sales price. So my recommendation at this time, because of the, there's, there'll be additional expenses to. File our application on December the second. That we would recommend not applying for problem two, three. I did, however, give one update that, sorry, say it like this, so keep problem one to three in play. Uh, I did verify yesterday, the state got correspondence that. In the event that we have attrition with buyers that are under contract, and we have units that are going, that are on for sale still. Uh, we could reapply to assist with reducing the gap at that time for lowering. But we would have to go through the application process and we'd have, you know, we'd have to apply when it was open. But the timing of that, if if it align, like we we started, like say it's pretty skyrocketed eight percent. And we have a couple of folks that say they came out under a four unit center in order to have construction. We would be able to have that provision and our contract with Mr. Digger that that, you know. County would seek funding to assist with. Problem two, three. So I would just say that the state was actually pretty receptive to that, actually. And I thought that that would be. A good way to showcase the need versus right now.
Yeah.
They're lacking this, the data. To show the gap because of what their report says, so we can say, hey, we, we have folks who are no longer able to afford this price point. Under the current interest rate environment, they they might allow us to go and get some guy gap finance for their science back. So that's where that sits, but. I don't know if a full motion is needed to direct us not to apply at this time. So we'll just skip that.
Think so, but do we wanna do it just for clarity?
No, it's, it's complete, for the record, you can certainly do that, just to say based on the information.
Yeah, we did submit an LLI, so it's probably important for us to be able to document that.
Yeah.
And and I will, I think when we respond to Evan, we will be clear that. You know, we just want to leave open our option of future data, why there's circumstances. But, so.
Um, I'll make a motion to. Accept staff's recommendation to not submit a problem two, three application at his time, but to. Continue to monitor the project. And possibly. Consider. An application in the future.
Second your motion.
Great, yeah. Yeah. Call for vote. All right, great, thank you.
All right, so then we'll jump into the lottery guidelines and housing guidelines, and I guess we go off it. Chris also could. There's been a few restrictions in all this as well, right? So today, what's really important is that we are, if you look at the timeline in the. Lottery guidelines that are attached to your, that we are actually asking for approval today. Tomorrow is the beginning of applications, so we are prepared to send out a mass email to seventy nine. Folks who expressed interest, we have uploaded the application. We upload it to the website, and we have to December thirteen for folks to get those applications to us. If you read in these lottery guidelines, the lottery guidelines that currently the way. The two tiers are set up, so if you recall, your housing guidelines in the year. Yeah, you're gonna have to help me out a little bit, because the guidelines have been amended since I touched them. But you had a threat for refusing. Plots for your first year, and those were, that first tier was. Set aside for agencies that participate in assisting with the project. From the work session, it was asked staff to talk to the state because they funded the project. About how we could prioritize the five agencies that are listed. We did get pretty good direction from the state back on what is permissible. Under their guide, under their fair housing guidelines, on how prioritize contributing partners. Basically, there's two factors that the county has to consider, one is a. Pro. A ratio of the amount of funds put into the project. And the second is that if you're going to prioritize agencies, there, the agency's employer demographic. Employees need to be representative of the community's overall demographics, so race. Income, gender, etc, so. What that means is that having more agencies, so having all five agencies broaden your. Actual demographic pool and puts you in a very safe spot according to, you know, obviously the state is very. Clear that they're not offering legal advice to us when we're, when we're talking. But they definitely said that that is much better than trying to say one unit for Lake County, one unit for the school district, you know, one. One, the other, other three.
Sure, I mean, sure, I could argue that even just those two agencies would fit the demographic.
Sure, sure. And then on top of that, so then, so then if you go back to the original statement, which is the, the pro forma. Of how many, how much fund were put into the total project cost, those five agencies equal about two point five, almost three million. And it's like, how far back do we go, do we go back to twenty twenty one, when we started talking about all this, and we did the initial. Side analysis, or, you know, do we look at like the dread costs in like the last year that you guys have put in, so. What I would say, though, is that is a very safe twenty five percent, so that would equal six units. So the way the lottery guidelines were stated is that the first lottery that would happen on February eleventh. So the first six names would be picked from the hat, from those five, from, from folks that are, that have at least one full time employee. In those five agencies, after those six names are picked, anybody who's still in that lottery would then be put in the lottery number two. So they still have the option on the additional units, but they would just be in there with the rest of all five. Which is one hundred forty percent for less than full time employment in Lake Shee, Summit or Eagle County.
So just. Before, before we come to that, I wanted to come back to that second criteria that you got guidance from the state on, is it? The i- i- is, is that sort of, I don't know if this is the right word, but like the sort of demographic match, you know, of the tier one. Agencies, is it? Their employment has to match, or the actual people who get?
Their, their overall employment.
So, 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 so we're not like. Micro managing the outcome.
Yeah, I think, I think the, I think you have, since it's made available to any full time employee.
Then that's.
That's.
Of the fairness thresholds, okay.
Because you cannot control who could possibly.
That's where I was like, oh, this sounds like a really weird.
No, you're correct, it's, it's the employment makeup of the agencies.
Okay. But yeah, that, that, that was it for questions on those. Two, so sorry to cut you off, Sarah.
I, I mean, I. Think we talked about it in all of our meetings, and I would really like to look at. And I'm wondering why that is not.
The only thing I would say is, if you were to do that and and then do a tier three, I don't think we're selling units.
You think we're gonna sell any units?
I don't think we're gonna sell them all, I don't think we'll have them all. I, I think with current interest rates, of those seventy nine folks, twenty four. My experience is like about half of them are actually gonna apply, and then about eighty percent of them will call. So. You do like half seventy nine is thirty, and then you do about eighty percent, you're gonna be like around twenty eight. Or thirty two people that might actually wind up getting in the lottery after it's all said and done.
Why are we adding a third tier?
You could do a third.
Or like a third moderate, whatever, however the terms you wanna use.
Yeah, could, so, so just to the. To, to. Better reset, I mean, we have the same number of people, it's just the order in which they're being considered, so I, I, I don't. See why fewer people would end up being qualified.
Well, I, I, I think the issue is that, that, that if I were someone who's employed in Eagle County. And I saw that I was gonna be in a lottery to the third day. And I was looking at all the stuff I had to do to apply, probably say yes. But that's me. Every lottery across the state. So I, if you guys wanna add a third tier, we can, we can do it, today's the day. Well, that's happened, and I have a third, third lottery. We could, we could qualify.
Yeah, I mean, that had always been my preference in discussions of the. Of the guidelines over, I mean, over the last. Three, four years.
So it would basically say, so if you're looking at the lottery participants, lottery participants are allowed to include all qualified applicants. Under a hundred forty percent, pay a mile of full time employment in Lake County. Uh, and then lottery three would be, would be as lottery two, yes.
Yes. Yes.
And lottery worker on February third.
Why do you think that having a third tier would?
I.
Result in less sales?
I don't know, we'll see. I, I think it's, it becomes a three day event for folks and it just. I don't know, we'll, we'll see if there's, see what the interest level is.
Are those on weekdays?
Or weekdays, yeah, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And so, so I'm gonna read it to you.
But it's not a three day, I mean, well.
And you have to.
It could, it could be a three day event for some.
You want, you're gonna just for the ease of not having.
But if you're not into your one, you definitely have day two and three, if you don't qualify for tier two, then you have day three. But you could run through all of them, potentially.
Oh, if you're like tier one eligible, but don't get into tier one, then you might have a three day. Impact on your life.
Do you ever do these every weekend? Michael?
No, I, I mean, it does, that's not the weekend issue, not initially for me. What's your thought on weekend? Is that we in Super Bowl, by chance? I'm not, I'm not, I think, see, just like, is that?
Yeah.
Is that the, because there is, that is, I think that's actually the week. Between the Super Bowl and. It's the Pro Bowl, and someone Googled. It's the Pro Bowl, if someone Googled. I'm sorry, I'm.
No, that's.
Sounds sounds ridiculous, but it's honest to the truth. I mean, you know, we could do a lottery.
Is the second of February.
February second?
That's the first weekend in February.
It's probably the second one then because it's usually after. Uh February. Oh wait. Yeah, yeah, next time, February ninth.
So the fact that it's the day after Super Bowl, um.
I don't, I'm not necessarily suggesting we do it over a weekend, but. I think it is what it is.
They don't, they don't have to be present to know that strongly, they do. For the lottery, yeah.
Because they literally go up and put their, put their sticker on. They they, what they can do is they can have someone there on their behalf.
That's what I was gonna say, cuz I know there was some provision in there about if you can't be there, contact Jackie.
Yeah, and we actually have this, we have a form that basically basically said, not not true power of attorney.
Right.
But, you know, the form that says this person would be selected when we have.
Like a proxy.
Yep. And, yeah. Uh we have a strong feeling on. I mean, we did it early enough too on Sunday.
Well, Sunday that, then you run to. Religious conflict, sir.
Yeah, I mean, there's no.
Okay, well. That's so, okay, that's the tier, so we've tackled that one. Um there's a day of lottery process in here, I'm not gonna go through, but basically. Everybody's name is, everybody's one pick, they're in a container, a third party that's has no association with the county. Will be selected, full names, there is no bias possible. Uh it's practically probably gonna be Jennifer Cometa that actually does that, uh she'll pick names, they'll they'll come up, we'll put her name on. The the unit that they would like. Uh if all the units that they would want are taken, they can, there'll be a. A waiting list on the side of the board that they can put their name, uh my. Uh past experience with this is that you almost always call people on the way. So I would, you know, and then we would add on the third day, you'll fit every single name until the waiting list is completed. So everyone's name have been drawn and beyond. Uh the uh. One big thing uh under those lottery process, two big things. Uh so the actual transaction will be with Mr. Berger, so he will have free draft a contract, a purchase contract. Uh and they will have three business days once their name is is picked to, and we're actually. I would suggest now, because we have three days, we should actually make it four business days. Because we'll be doing a lottery at the last day, so we'll make that to four business days, just to drive with the the change we just made. To sign a contract and the permits money, their permits money is one percent of the purchase price. So uh we'll be making sure that buyers understand that by February, they will, they will have have our this money ready to go. Uh we do have an appeals process.
So so sorry, just make sure, so they don't have to have that earnest money within that four-day window, they just like.
They do, that when they sign the contract, they have to have theirs.
So, oh, oh, cuz the lottery is already happening, yes, okay, I'm I'm with you.
And then the last thing is that which I think is the last real important thing the question is way in on is that we have assigned. The regional housing authorities grievance committee, which one member, I believe, of the county commissioner sits on, one member of city council. Number to hear any, I would recommend staying on that. Okay. All right, so with the changes, so I'll just go through the couple of changes. So we're crystal clear on what you're adopting today, so we're adding a second, uh we're modifying the second tier to say. This is the second lottery will include all qualified applicants under a hundred forty percent AMI with full-time employment from Lake County. Or we're not selected in lottery one. And lottery three will say participants in lottery three will include. All qualified applicants under a hundred forty percent AMI with full-time employment in Lake Shady Summit in Eagle Counties. And any additional applicants who are not selected in lottery two.
Wait, can you say that third one again, cuz I think that's slightly different than what you actually have in lottery two in the document, you said.
So lottery, maybe lottery three then.
Lottery three, which is.
Participants in lottery three will include all qualified applicants under a hundred forty percent AMI. With full-time employment in Lake Shady Summit, Eagle, Oregon Counties and. And any additional applicants who are not selected in lottery two.
In the draft you have here, you said, it says uh qualified full-time Lake County residents employed in Lake Chape Summit or Eagle Counties. Lake County residents employed in those counties? Not anyone employed in all of those counties? That is the description I heard in what you said.
Oh, sorry, I'm reading from here. The lottery business, business depends, but I'm seeing what you're saying. Yes, this will say, this needs to be, that residence needs to be taken out of the February eleventh. Okay. So go down below, sorry. So we're modifying it this year, the lottery just ends. Is there a reason or residence needs to be included yet? It's in four days, right?
Yeah, I I mean. And that's up to you guys, I, you know, I think that when we get to lottery three, we just wanna sell units. Right, and so they wanna be come a little county present.
Well, I think. We will, we will change the upper section to match what I'm describing in the lottery. Like, cuz I'm gonna have to change that section as well. That that's on the dates, but what's important is that lottery participants, I need to get right so that I can change the upper. So here's how, so I'll read through it one more time. And tell me if you're okay with this, we'll match the the second one. So lottery participants in lottery one will include qualified applicants who are under a hundred sixty percent AMI. And currently employed by one of the following uh quarters in priority order. Lake County Government, City of Letgo, Lake County, uh School District, Parkville Water, St. Vincent's Health. All other qualified applicants regardless. I don't know why that's.
Shouldn't the school, is it a, shouldn't that come second before city? The value of the land is greater than the three hundred thousand dollars.
Right, they're all on the same lottery, so.
But you said in priority order.
Yeah, I don't know what Jennifer is, you know that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
I don't like.
That is no priority order.
That we can.
Probably, yeah. That's fine.
Six tier, I mean, yeah, that's not one tier.
Yeah, we have one, five, so we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so remove priority order and then it doesn't matter who's, okay.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay, we need to get it right and we.
Participants in lottery one will include qualified applicants who are under a hundred sixty percent. AMI currently, do you wanna say full-time, full-time employment? Or do you, or can part-time employment qualify? For this first priority. Do you have full-time employment? Apparently.
Well, what if you got a, what if you got a, somebody that's like semi-retired and works part-time?
That's the question.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it should, I don't think the full-time should, employment should be in there.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, and I thought, isn't.
Well, you could have, I mean, a perfect example is you could have a bus driver who has a second job.
Right.
And I mean, it's not, you know, I could actually run into that exact scenario, whereas whereas. Or like uh someone else that employed at the cafeteria in the school district. Or janitorial staff.
Bus driver.
Yeah, so I agree. Okay, so one more time, for participants in lottery one will include qualified applicants who are. Under a hundred sixty percent AMI and currently employed by one of the following employees, order, sorry. Lake County Government, Lake County School District, City of Letgo, Parkville Water District, St. Vincent's Health.
Yeah.
So lottery two now has full-time employment in it. Participants in lottery two include all qualified applicants under a hundred forty percent AMI, full-time employment in Lake County. And water and uh sorry, and any applicants not selected in lottery. Hey? Participants in lottery three will include qualified qualified applicants under a hundred forty percent AMI with full-time employment in Lake. Chape Summit, Eagle, or Eagle Counties, and any applicants who are not selected in lottery two.
Right.
Okay, and then the final changes are.
So, sorry, so back to the full-time employment, what if you've got somebody that's that's, you know, like I said, retired and works part-time?
In lottery two, it would be moved to lottery three.
Okay.
Now, they were one of your, in one of your prioritized priorities because they were, so they're a bus driver in lottery one. They qualify for lottery two because they're part of lottery. It's it's someone who's part-time in the county, so if you don't have full-time employment in Lake County and you don't work for one of those five, then you're lottery three. And so then in lottery three, so actually we should clarify that, in lottery three, we'll take out full-time employment, so then, so I'm sorry. One more time, so we currently have participants in lottery three, we will include all qualified applicants under a hundred forty percent AMI. With full-time employment in Lake Shaping. As said, you were to be clear, you wanted to say everyone had to include seasonal. Participants in lottery three will include all qualified applicants under a hundred forty percent AMI with employment.
Yeah.
So then you have your first time.
I mean, even if it's seasonal, they're employed year-round, is that the point?
Full-time employment is defined as thirty-two hours or more.
At a single.
And there's a number, there's a number of hours a year that you have to get, it's like forty, hundred hours. I don't have that.
I just, I just, yeah, I think that, I think you should. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of people that are gig workers, seasonal workers, or some combination of the two, and I I don't think it should be the full, the full-time. Is the problem I have with it, because, but the changing workplace and the way people work and, you know, um.
So, yeah, it's a good question.
Time of the deed restriction.
Uh in in the deed restriction. Who you want to house, if you want full-time staff here.
I mean, at some point, I I mean, just in a more practical manner, at some point, if you're really working a very small number of hours, your income's not gonna qualify.
Right.
To get a loan.
Right.
Right.
I mean, it depends on what you're doing. There's, there's people that are making, there's people that are making plenty of money. That are not working for the 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 traditional forty-hour work week, and the the modern, the workplace, the modern working environment is. Is rapidly changing and there's a lot of people that are, I don't work the 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 old-school. Forty-hour or thirty-whatever hour, you know, it is, you have people that are consultants, you have people that are. That are gig workers and and things like that, that live here full-time, but they're not. Do working that the traditional way of working.
But their their employer is not in that county.
Yeah.
I'm talking about two or three people.
Sure.
Are we, are we need to specify that as well, like a local worker, like a of local based employee?
The the employment in Lake County is.
Defined as.
In the guidelines, it's defined as a, your employer's based on that.
Okay.
Okay, so the the big question becomes, A, do you want full-time employment, and number two, and we've already removed full-time employment in number three. So basically, if you don't have full-time, that if you're gonna do that second lottery, what you're saying is Lake County full-time employee. At least one person in the household has to be like ten county full-time employee, be part of that sector.
Yeah, I I just think, I just think the third tier should be structured in a way. That captures people that are, that live here full-time, that have the income to buy a house, but are not working in the traditional. Definition of a full-time job.
So I was drafted, I have that, so I don't have it, so number three says, participants in lottery three will include all qualified applicants. Under a hundred forty percent AMI with employment in Lake Sh- JV Summit.
Because you could be a professional musician and and not work in those counties, you could be on the road and then working and.
But then you're not eligible, right?
If you don't, if you're a, if your checks aren't coming from one of those four counties, you're not gonna be eligible. I think that I will, at this, I I will be like, that's where you do wanna draw the line. Because you, that's when you start to get into getting. You you get into a place where you could have folks that are now second homeowners or. You know, like, I'm gonna come here and work in the summer and go back to my house in Texas, or a corner, kind of scenarios, which is not. So I think you keep the employee, you know, but they don't have that full then, that is not perfect. Yeah. And just to be clear, in lottery two, we will ensure that the, this. Cuz I wanna talk to Jennifer about this, but in number two, the intent is. That you have full-time employment in a Lake County-based employer, whether we have to add up base employer language to this or not. I'm gonna look for Jennifer because she wrote the guidelines, uh I'm sorry, I just couldn't remove from the guidelines enough that I'm not. There to to speak to that directly, but that is getting ahead of knots, that is the intent. Okay.
You said full-time definition under the definitions of guidelines.
It's a, it's, there's an employment section, there's.
We didn't define it, how many hours?
If, again, I don't know which person may change this to. There there were, there used to be, you know, these are ones I sent you guys, you've, you've probably two and a half years. Okay, all right, uh we will also just. We will amend the, the section above to match, but the 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 critical piece here is that. What what I would have asked for that is a motion to amend the lottery procedures, ensuring that. The new procedures match the directed action or directed. Um the the direction of the U S C C for lottery participants. So I'm gonna have, you know, we're gonna have to add an extra date, and I'm gonna have to make some amendments to the turn of waiting list to have lottery three. But um what's really critical to your direction is that lottery participants. Is that clear?
Yeah. Yeah.
And we published that by a a motion to group heading finally, or we do to address the modifications discussed. I think that, then, help that.
Okay.
Awesome.
Sorry, I'm like, muddy waters here, just looking at the, I mean, the next, the housing authority guidelines have like thirty hours.
Okay.
Average over an annual basis.
Yeah. I, I was gonna be shocked. Okay, so I'm gonna save that. I'll get those over to you today.
Okay.
So we do need a motion.
All right, uh, I'll move to. Amend the lottery procedures as. Presented to board to match the direction of the B O C C, the lottery participants. Which included adding the third lottery process.
Tier.
Tier. And, um, some grammatical. Consistencies, um. As well as, um, pending final legal review.
Well, the second motion.
That capture, I know, okay, great, uh, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next item on here is the guidelines, and we'll talk about the deed restriction. So, um. I'm trying to understand the full scope of what has occurred with your guidelines, um, and what happened with the regional authority. What I'm strongly recommend, um, is that the deed restriction has a direct reference to the guidelines. In my experience with municipalities that adopt guidelines of the regional housing authority. That the county should also, uh, take a formal action on adopting the guidelines by resolution. Uh, upcoming meeting, because we would want to cite that resolution and the reception number of which is recorded. In the actual deed restriction, um, because technically, if. The regional housing authority is not party to your deed restriction, because you can correct me at any point if I'm speaking here. Uh, but you don't wanna have that third party to, subject to your deed restriction because you, the, but the county is. They, has the enforceability on there, on the restriction. So. What I would suggest is that, um, and we have made time to have a formal review done by. Chris of the guidelines to go through and to ensure that there is consistency between that and what's being proposed in the deed restriction. Um, and, and so we'll make sure that that happens. I haven't been involved in the, the guidelines, but I wanna. Luckily, Jennifer is part of our team, um, and so I will redo the guidelines with, with Chris. Then we're gonna have a sit-down with Jennifer to go through those direct comments and make any modifications for your consideration of upcoming game. We'll bring that and the deed restriction back at the same time, uh, for you to, to consider. They, they, a really important thing to understand about a deed restriction is it's actually almost, it is a property right under state law. But sorry, if I'm wrong again, I'm sounding like an attorney, um, but you do need to be making a formal approval. Because you're gonna record that against the legal descriptions of the, the laws before the transfer.
Along that same line, the one thing I suggest is, uh, I was thinking about how we could approach this if we don't want to end up asking. The housing authority to modify the guidelines, to adopt something. Um, perhaps we could take an approach similar to what we do with the model traffic code to clear the county adopts. The model traffic code with exceptions as to these modifications. So that you could adopt them and then have, have a document essentially says, here are the provisions that are modified for Lake County's purposes. And that way you don't run the risk of then having the housing authority being, no, these have got, we adopted and not. Having them feel like they have to go back and re-adopt or revise their government. So you can, you can essentially customize them to Lake County's needs and projects. While leaving their original documents.
And just in practice as well, the way the guideline, the, the guidelines are meant to be advisory. There is the lottery procedure you just adopted and the deed restriction are not advisory. They're recorded, um, well, the. Lottery procedures are recorded, but the lottery procedures, the way the guidelines read is that, based on your funders. Your lottery procedure, you're gonna change every single time. So you can't write a perfect lottery. Procedure because like the state came in and said, you can only do twenty-five percent this time around. Uh, so that is kind of the way that was structured to begin with. So I, I like that recommendation. Uh, what's also really important about, just as an update, at that same time as well, um, I wanna be bringing forward the burger contract. Um, for development services, we have a draft, um, it's, I, something, there are some conditions in. In that agreement that are really pertinent to, um, the B O C C's attention, uh, moving forward. Uh, one of which is his, his construction finances are wanting a guarantee. The back, from the backing of the, um, the county to, uh. Buy, purchase any units that are not closed on, and that's a very unrealistic ask because there. You can't just say, I'm gonna buy all twenty-four units. So my suggestion would be to put a limit on the amount of units. That you would potentially consider having a backing on. And the second piece of. The, um, which I would recommend up to two max, that's as far as I would ever take that, by the way. Um, and if you're, if you guys felt differently about that, we should certainly talk about that, but that's currently as, I kind of contemplated it. But the second piece is, as it relates to the housing pricing, that sheet I sent you, there's currently a four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar subsidy. To buy down those prices that we had talked about. That subsidy would actually be held, and so when we close on the construction loan. That check would be cut to the bank and held as escrow as part of the banking on the construction financing. And that helps, basically what that does is it allows us to do the one percent escrow for all the other buyers. Because the county is basically putting up a, a substantial escrow, uh, on units under contract. The only other big, the, the other big pieces of the contract that's currently drafted that I think are pertinent today. Um, are the, um, requirement that the deed restriction is put in place prior to. The transfer of the property to Mr. Burger, and there's an option that is recorded that in the benefit of his default. You guys have first right to choose to purchase back the land. So those are kind of the big. Pieces that are currently contemplated as of today. Uh, my experience on this is it's gonna be a little bit back and forth. Before we get a final draft that, that his attorney, county attorney are gonna be agreeing on. Um, he has proposed potential land lease, which I don't see how that's going to work, but, um, we certainly will listen. And, but I, I do think that the transfer of the land, otherwise, I, there's quite a few like. How the county would be party to then additional purchase contracts, et cetera, that I don't think his nonprofit model works for a little bit. But we will, we will work on that. Uh, and the reason he wants that, to be pretty clear, is that he can then bond on the project versus provide a lawyer credit. Um, and so as of today, in the current draft, we had a lot of credit proposed, but, uh, again, we'll, we'll get that. Get that moving to those states. Um, the final.
Can you, sorry. Go.
Um, I lost track of the math on the, um, back, back a little bit on what the county would put resources. Into escrow, or like what, so can you summarize what the.
We said we do, we have the five hundred thousand, but the way the math adds up, it's four hundred and eighty.
Two.
Two.
So the currently, and again, this is. I think Crystal's last, she's only had a date in her inbox, uh, but that's draft, so.
Up to development conference, yeah, I'm sorry, that has not been.
Yeah, so, so currently the way it's contemplated is. There is a provision about the kind of purchase of unsold housing units, um, so it's, let us read it, and. This again has not seen legal review, but this is, this is out of, uh. This example is how I structured a deal in Preston New, uh, based on any buyer traction, so just for, for where this is coming from. The county will provide a, so, number four in this contract says, the county purchase of unsold housing units. The county will write a further reduction in sales risk to Burger by agreeing purchase up to two, page one, housing units. Should a unit be made on the market for more than two months following the date the county issues as for the occupancy for the unit. The total purchase price for these two additional units shall not exceed six hundred fifty thousand. The county, so the county will also seek additional resources such as the state Prop one two three program to simply writing down the cost. Of some homes to provide that the buyers, that greater affordability than was proposed here. That, that wraps in that discussion. The county's obligation to purchase units to provide financial assistance subject to the annual appropriations under Article ten, uh, X of. Con, uh, Constitution set forth in paragraph thirty of this contract. So that obviously is Kristen's bias. Um, on that, that's definitely, then the second one is additional buydown assistance from the county. The county will provide further reduction in sales prices on up to ten units offered to buyers, how do you want a hundred percent AMI? And then map up to four hundred eighty-two thousand on use under this contract in time of the construction loan closing. These funds will be placed in escrow at the time of construction loan and closing, the burgers lender. Sorry, lender, and will count towards the final, uh, purchase price qualified buyers under contract for these, under contract for these units. They, and it's subject to tater.
Yeah, thanks.
So those are, that's currently what is being contemplated, that those were the two basic, um. He has, he has gone to his construction financiers and had an initial conversation. And that was, those, those two provisions were the initial feedback that he got from his lenders. So how do we get across the hurdle of not having very quality? It would be, okay. Okay, I'm brought up.
Have a question about pricing.
Sure.
Um. The winds are in the massive are at four forty-one and four forty-five, they're one hundred, one hundred and forty percent. That's correct. Do we? How, that's my question. Um.
So we're only subsidizing one two-story. The other one would be sold at his price. And also, the Mount Massive is the two-story unit. The issue is on the far west side, side of Third Street, that hillside, super steep. And.
So we're doing a different layout.
Well, what the difference is, is when we went out there after the groundbreaking. To push that unit all the way into the hillside is going to make it exponentially expensive. And it was actually determined that for the price of pushing it back, we could keep it, we could push it actually forward, put a four-barage underneath here. So that would, that would satisfy the city's parking requirement, and basically the reduction of having to renew all that additional fill. We could do the same rate for, for a little more, do a garage. Those would be the nicest units, um, and so that's why the price of that. Cause you have a four-barage. The other thing is, is the way, to be real honest, I actually like having that unit price like that. Because if we don't have any buyers for that unit, we can take that unit out of the lottery. And we could do a smaller two-bedroom, two-bath unit, for instance, that's nice.
Okay.
So if we're not getting any interest in that unit, and my intent is to work with his development team about how to substitute him in a different.
Build a smaller, smaller units.
Okay. What about like dividing up for, I don't know, many, eighteen thousand dollars?
So, I, yes, you could, um, I wouldn't go, I. What I did with these numbers is I, as you can see, I did a seven and a half percent interest rate.
Yeah.
And looked at potential payments and AMIs, so using the states. And so we're far below where the, you know, you can see that this, this is what the state's recommending as, as a max sales price. Versus what we're gonna be offering. So I did try and, if anything, you might knock some off of like the actual one sixty units. Or sorry, the one forty up above, instead of taking subsidizing the one hundreds anymore.
I think that's, yes, but I think that's what I meant, like the one subsidizing the one forties, the two larger units.
Well, so let's, let's talk about, let's talk about the cost rolling forward before we start adding more. So there are some things because of timing that.
But thank you, sorry, the pointing out the interest rate that you did input there makes you feel better about all.
Yeah. So. What's, what's really important to understand is we're still, because the grant ends in March. There are costs going forward with the project that we can't cover under the grant. Um, so I'm gonna go through those real quick. Uh, the, uh, many costs that are definitely there are, one, I don't know how much further we're gonna make it. On Third Street for soil remediation, uh, so we had ninety-eight thousand budgeted, we did get Sixth Street accomplished. But Third Street is by far the largest site, so there could be sixty grants still sitting out. We're having a meeting tomorrow with the engineers to find out, um, I know they're out there surveying how much that soil actually got taken on the sites. So we'll have a further number, but that could be in maybe two to sixty thousand. Uh, so we've. I would strongly suggest that we continue to use the current contractor because the bid we received from Burger's team was substantially higher. Than, than, um, three M excavation. Uh, so we, we would, we would be getting that work done by May thirty-first. The second big expense, um, that is still out there is the, um, is the surveys. The town and service, so we will need to produce, uh, twelve town surveys. So those surveys are when the actual unit is constructed on each lot, um, and we are also getting a bit on that. And then the final is the engineering and drainage requirement, um, from the city. Uh, so there's, that is, that's well, is where the additional costs. Uh, we have paid tax fees. Techy's filings with us, um. And, oh, the, the other, the other expense that is out there, we are going to prepay. Heartfield water for the physical having a name to the curb stop. But they can only estimate that cost, so percentage, say running the rock, additional excavation cost, we could add additional costs there too. So those are, as well as the, my, my additional fee too, are the additional expenses that are still lingering in the next year. So that's why saving some money on, on those buy downs. You know, we're, we've got to a certain point where I was like, we probably need to be realistic with what's still out there.
Okay.
So it's on my. Checklist of coming back to you is creating a budget after we leave with engineers tomorrow and. What we're, what we did accomplish and what we didn't accomplish this year. So I should have that, that be on, on that, here very shortly. I don't know if they, they can keep going on Third Street, but I'm not sure.
Thank you for that, I wish you'd talk me through that.
What is our next meeting? Is it the third meeting, is it the third Tuesday in November, the nineteenth? My, it will be written draft in the contract. All right, uh, last but not least, uh, I think we're at the discussion of consideration of. The lottery guidelines that we're on now. We need no new questions.
We did our lottery guidelines and voted, but we haven't taken any action if we need any, um, the regional housing authority.
You're gonna bring.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, so that, those, those certainly, I, I appreciate. I actually love that, having the actual changes outlined in the resolution, it's a really amazing idea. That I'm actually gonna share. It's a really amazing idea that I'm actually gonna share. I think that's an elegant way to structure that, when you have disparity thinking is. Uh, okay, I think the last, yes, okay, so the last um. Item on here is my um team's P S A to administer the housing lottery. So we've, as I discussed in the work session, we found out in state that I cannot bill my time uh for qualifying. Income qualifying folks for the lottery, uh, or my team's time uh for that service. Uh, in the planning capacity grant or the incentives grant. Uh, what I have done in my other, for my other clients was actually charged by buyers a one percent fee. Uh, so that would be approximately eighty thousand dollars, uh, that is paid at closing, and the reason that that's typically done is is. For me, for me and for my team, it's a pay for performance, right? So it's instead of billing you every month on hours, it's, I actually conduct the lottery, then I actually get people to close here. And there's like an incentive for me finishing the job. Um, for instance, I was, I'll use this example, I was literally spreading mulch at my last job, because our. Landscape contract came in a hundred and forty thousand dollars of a budget to spread mulch, and instead of charging that to the client, I was out there for two days with the wrestling team. Save that money, but I think that's, that illustrates the point of like, to get our C O, we had to have landscaping finished. And instead of like saying, well, that's not part of the contract, it was like, it was because I need to pay. Um, so that's why I would suggest it as a, as typically A Y the buyers pay for that, because it's me getting performing. But as we discussed in the last work session, you did not wanna add additional one percent to the buyer's costs, which I totally respect. So what I would suggest then is that it's a, the contract, the way it reads currently is I built two one-month sums. But first, some something come due, once I complete the lottery, do the contract administration with the, with the winners of the lottery. And then the second month sum would come at the time of certificate. So, um, and then with the way our contract also reads is that. My firm will be paying my two R W nine, two R W nine subcontractors, promote LLC. And Ravenwood, which is Pete, who's assisting with the buyer, so I'm responsible for paying that between now. So you won't be seeing bills from them, as well as the translation services that were also provided. Um, so I'll be doing that, but it might, my, I don't know how almost to do it, unless you want me to do it.
I think that makes a lot of sense, thank you.
Uh, question, Chris, is there anything we need to add? Do do we need to allow subcontracting?
There in terms of the, the, and then what's teed up in your packet today, now just.
Oh, okay, great, I I didn't, I didn't see that as I skimmed through it.
The last version.
Okay, okay, great, great.
And they will be responsible for also doing that insurance, you did, because.
Okay, great.
Doesn't seem like there's any objection, um, um, to approve the P S A with my rural planner. To administer the housing lottery as presented.
Second motion. Hi, uh, P S A amended P S A, sorry, but my rural planner is approved. Great. Think that covers everything we need to cover on the, um, those agenda items for housing. And um, I think at this point, we bounce back to agenda twenty-one. Go, uh, which is going into executive session. I can read that out, call for.
I can, yeah, um, I'll move to go into executive session and hold a conference of county's attorney and staff to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. About strategy for negotiations, under instructions negotiators in relation to the Harrison Park master plan. Pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four two four two.
It's a motion. Great, and while that's on the table before we vote, what staff do we want to invite or review, do we want to invite in?
We have the county manager, the county attorney, the consultant, Michael Yearman, um, Jackie. Melissa Kendrick and Jackie, well, hand please.
Yeah, yeah, sound good.
The county manager requests a deputy county manager, P.
Um, okay, great, with that, a couple vote, hi, hi, so, uh, we are good to go into executive session, we'll take a quick break. Uh, well, a few minute break as needed, um, while we clear the room and get all sorted.